Well, it looks like it's six o'clock. So, let's call the meeting to order and if Pat shows, be great. We'll start without him. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. Everyone is here except for Pat and Dave Farlinger. So, we'll move on. The changes to the agenda. We pulled the winter basketball coaches off the agenda. Just too many unknowns there. So, it's early, so we just didn't, we felt that needed to be some more work. So, we pulled that off. And then nine F, the change to recommend the hiring of Ian Thompson. So, are there any other changes or any questions about those things? Okay, if not, could we get a motion to approve the changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Kyle. Is there a second?
Wait a minute, I have one quick question.
Okay.
I know I looked at this. Is it on here about the subpay? Is that?
It is.
Yep, yep. On E, so it'd be a 10E.
10E, alright. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the changes to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Angie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, then we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Amanda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright. No public here tonight, so there must not be any public input. Okay, recognition and good things happening. Congratulations to the LO School District retirees. We have been very lucky that you chose to serve at Leroy Ostrander Schools, and we thank you. Thank you to Axel Gumbel for all the articles, videos, and spotlights he puts on for Leroy Ostrander Schools. We appreciate it, Axel. Thank you to Dylan Emerson, fearless video man, for all the hard work, efforts, and extras he puts into the LO District. You are valued here, so we appreciate you. Thank you to business manager Peterson. She's recognized tonight. She doesn't like to be recognized. She has been exceptional working on the budget, coding, and implementing business plans for the fiscal year 2024-25. Congratulations to Elizabeth Loken, our ECFE coordinator, parent educator, on her writing and receiving of the SMIP literacy grant. With the grant, the school district will receive 215 books, 200 English and 15 Spanish. Thank you, Elizabeth, for your hard work and dedication to LO. And last but not least, thank you to Jenna Olson, our student rep on the school board. She has served the LO District in a terrific way, and she will be missed, and best of luck at Minnesota State Mankato. And this is actually a gift for you. With, I assume this opens, with their certificate of service for you, Jenna. So, thank you very much. Okay, reports. Student rep report. Is there a report? Thank you. Short one this time. Okay, no staff tonight, right? Principals report. Aaron?
Alright, uh, first before I kind of keep our goals that we've been working on all year long for the staff up top for our PLC goals. Openings, we have set grade yet and two pair positions. Students got their schedules handed out. I got their schedules handed out this week, and the master's schedule is, well, 99% completed. Just making sure the schedule, nothing comes back crazy with the student schedules. We received the Innovation Award. We received a Bronze Star Award from the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals for the creation and vision of our Student Service Center. So, I hope that was pretty cool we got that. Haven't got anything like that before, so just thought I'd mention that. Just a reminder, kind of along with that, another very thing is just a reminder what we've done. We, the National Model School for Responsibility Center Discipline, we're the first Minnesota school district to be, to have that title. And Larry Thompson, he's been here before. I'm scheduled for November again next year to come back and work with our staff. Tried, I think it's the second Tuesday, but I'm trying to get it switched to the third Tuesday, so maybe he could come to a board meeting. I think you guys, I thought you guys saw him a few years ago to bring him back. So, I'm trying to change that date. I know his schedule's pretty tight, but something I'm working on for next year. Just some college partnerships that I'm continuing to work on, trying to grow that process and, you know, get more, not only more student teachers, but also more opportunities for our kids. We just wrapping up our second year of a work-study program through Student Service Center as well. Still trying, always trying to connect and build relationships with businesses, and we'll continue to try and expand that as we continue forward. We've talked about our Marzano process for teacher evaluation. The elementary, middle school, high school is a three-year rotation, which is set up, we had that set up, but all non-tenure teachers are three years in a row. But the change with this new process is I do all teachers, all teachers do a growth goal and two checkpoints throughout the year with me. And that's a change from the past where if you weren't on the evaluation process, I wouldn't see you for three years. But I've changed that to now where I meet with every teacher every year now. So, you get an evaluation every three, but you get a goal every year. So, I like that process. I hopefully the teachers liked it, but it keeps me and the teachers more in tune with each other and the needs and the wants or anything they need. So, I really like the new process that I've gone to with the Marzano stuff. So, I did bring, I didn't know if anybody was really interested, but I did bring kind of what we use. So, if you are interested, I do have what the teachers, what I use for the teachers, if you're interested. That's why I didn't hand them out, because let's see me after if you're interested. Couple updates on some rooms. I know Tanya continues to write grants and continues to get things for our school. Down on the end of the elementary, now we have motor room. I'm not sure, we couldn't come up with us anything cool for a name, so it's the motor room. There's a lot of sensory and movement and stuff on the, it was our overflow classroom, so right the last room on the left before you get to the temporaries, if you ever wanted to stop down there. That is about two-thirds now of, full of different things that Tanya's got that all the elementary kids can go in and teachers can take their kids in to do things in there. So, that's kind of cool if you wanted to check that out sometime. And we are, and we have some teachers working on our fax room of organizing, cleaning, updating. Need a lot of TLC up there, so we're hopefully get that up and running satisfactorily for next year too, because I know the teachers like to use those for certain units and things like that. So, that's just some things wrapping up the end of the school year. We got graduation tomorrow night at seven. Tonight, actually at 6:30, we have our Title I Parent Education Night, Game Night. It's out on the courtyard. And then next week is finals week for our sixth through 12th graders. So, we're going to wrap up on Thursday of next week, so getting there.
Are they going full day Thursday or part day?
It'll be full.
Full day Thursday.
Yep, so we have it broken up in the, so Tuesday is a regular day, and then Wednesday, Thursday is broken up into larger blocks for their finals.
Okay.
And then the last portion of Thursday is checkout. So, it might, I mean, if they, if they walk or a high school student in the letter we sent home, they could get out a little bit early, but it won't be significantly early. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, Erin. Any other questions for Erin? Thanks, Erin. Alright, Jen?
Alright, I'll try to make this short, but it might be a little longer than expected. So, first thing is, of course, another session up in St. Paul is coming to a close, and so I try to update you as much as I can. But just want you to know that kind of our supplemental education bill, essentially, it's totaling 43 million or so, give or take, and has three key priorities that we're going to be focusing on. And it's the REDACT, student absenteeism, and of course, addressing teacher shortages. So, everything that the superintendents advocated for is now in this bill. So, I will have more information for you on that, but we're pretty excited about that and happy to hear it. A couple other, just real brief things on the legislative update. Elections policy bill is going to go through. It's just some changes with local school district policy on that. And then the E S S T, so earned, safe, and sick time. The unions as well as non-unions are kind of fighting it a little bit, and so we'll see what comes out of it. I actually have nothing to really share, except that there's a lot of fighting going on with that. And so, so we haven't really implemented much yet, knowing that, of course, it's going to change. So, and we have unions and non-unions here, so we'll see how it works. We're not going to jump in yet, so, but Sharon and I will be on it for sure. Next thing is, and Erin kind of mentioned this, you know, summer is right at our doorstep, and we like to do a little bit of an update on what we're doing in terms of the buildings and grounds. So, Erin meets regularly with our custodial staff. And so, you're going to see a lot of painting happening, some carpet things going on. Of course, the elementary gym is happening, so thank you all for that. We'll be power washing bathrooms and locker rooms. The trophy case is going to go back up. You remember when that all happened, when it caught fire? That's going to be taken care of. We're going to paint the pool entrance red. We're also going to be working in the pool and doing some painting there and some really harsh cleaning. So, all sorts of stuff. We're going to touch up the concession set, you name it. So, we're going to do a barrage of things, and I'll keep you updated on that. And I know Erin will too. Mine will likely be in an email until the next board meeting, but we'll update you on all that too. Speaking of updates, so next month, you will be approving our revised budgets, but also you will be approving our 24-25 budget. And, you know, as Dave suggested earlier, huge thank you to Sharon. She is my right-hand lady when it comes to money. I know I've said this before, and I am not joking. If I have a 1:00 AM question, she will get on her email, and she actually responds to me at 1:00 AM. It's the craziest thing. So, thank you to Sharon, but you guys, it is looking great. I'm extremely excited to share with you the changes that we made in the revised, because remember, we prepped you and said, hey, we're not going to look too good. We may have to tap into our reserve. Well, we're wrong. We did good. We have changed things. So, we will have a much broader presentation in June, but we're very happy with it. We also were thoughtful enough, I'd like to say, in terms of our staff that we knew ESAR would be running out. We're not a district that used our ESAR dollars to basically push out money, for example, staffing with ESAR dollars. And then you have to go through cuts with those staff because you have no money anymore. We didn't do, we didn't do that. We instead decided to use our ESAR dollars for sustainable usage, things that we'll have forever. Curriculum, desks and classrooms. Erin, you know, ordered all those, so things that we forever will have. But you will be very satisfied, I hope, with the budget. And please come with questions. Sharon is great at answering those, and I hope I can too. Keep in mind too, Sharon does the, Erin does the day-to-day budgeting things. Sharon does the one-to-two years out. I do the three-to-five year out. And that's kind of how we've been operating, and it's working. It's working. It's all falling into place now. So, thanks you guys so much for that. So, the majority tonight of my presentation is going to be about the strategic plan. So, in front of you, and I know this is like your 30th copy, but just kind of play along with me here. Way back in May, I said, or I'm sorry, April, I said I was going to send that email out to staff and see if there was any further direction, guidance, or thoughts, considerations that they wanted to implement in this strategic plan. One of the things that I actually answered to the email was, I think there needs to be a little bit more community outreach. And so, some of the things, as you've recently seen in my emails, that I believe are pretty important that we're going to be doing is, one, for the last month, Allison Whalen and I, she is the Leroy E D A and city council kind of consultant. And so, we've been working on trying to get together, how can the school work collaboratively in terms of a student-driven institution with our city? Not necessarily looking at us as adults, but as students, what can we do? So, coming up here in the next couple of weeks, we'll be attending, Allison and I will be attending a city council meeting. I'll invite some of you guys too, once we get the exact date and time down, to see how we can continue to partnership. So, that was one thing we thought about doing. The next thing is the Fillmore County Solar Project Community. And so, we put out some information to see if we could gather this grant. We're a pretty innovative school, they felt like, with some of the things we talked about with them and presented on. And sure enough, we got a grant. I just signed the grant. Starting next year, for the next approximately 20 years, we're going to have $9,000 just to talk renewable energy. We don't have to do anything with it. We have to continue though to be innovative, like the Student Services Center, things like that. Be innovative in our thinking. We talk a lot about career and college exploration with our kids. Be innovative that way. You know, what more can we do with that? And so, this is just a really nice community project and an outreach that I thought, you know, we're kind of missing an element here, so, in our strategic planning. So, that's kind of what we're doing as well. I would also like to say, you know, more and more, especially Deb. Deb, I'm going to put you on the spot here. With Deb being part of our Maur County Collaborative, I feel like that piece was another missing link, that now we're building that even more. She gets to meet a lot of the school superintendents too, which is great, and she can hear that a lot of us share the same concerns of what's going on in our counties, state, and nation, and how it's affecting our kids. So, having a voice from a school board level now at a county level, that actually has, you know, really stuck in our strategic plan too. So, thanks for that, Deb. I appreciate it. So, that was kind of the biggest thing I wanted to share. Keep in mind, in the fall, we're, I'll have a PowerPoint of the strategic plan, and it'll be a little bit lengthier because it'll probably be set aside on the agenda as a standalone of everything we've done since the implementation of the strategic plan, but where maybe, and you guys can consider some things too, where our weaknesses are, where our growth needs to be. So, for me, it was the community piece that we need to continue to do some outreach and whether it's locally or countywide. And so, anyway, so you'll be receiving more information on the strategic plan as we go, but the biggest presentation will be in the fall. I'll probably put you to sleep again with my presentation, but, but that's a little bit. So, that's it for me tonight. So, thank you, and we'll see you at graduation tomorrow night. How exciting.
Thank you, Jen. Any questions for Jen before we move on? Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of the April 2024 regular meeting minutes. Any question, I guess, and March. Any questions or other corrections for that? Okay. Treasures reports. Any questions on any of that? Okay. Fundraisers. Looks like the football and volleyball stencil fundraiser will be going on, and a Deer Creek Speedway 50-50 fundraiser for the football and volleyball, and also a Football Suites Tip Night fundraiser. Personnel. Approval of the contract for the principal for 2024 through 2026. Approval of the resignation of Don Holmquist as a career professional. Approval of the resignation of Ryan Evans as a concession stand advisor. And then approval of hiring Chris Hansen as a concession stand advisor. And then the approval of the hiring of Ian Thomason, special ed teacher at step, Lane five and, or Step five and Lane Master 30, plus 30. Approval of the Activities Department recommended hiring of the following fall coaches. One act play head coach and advisor, Don Holmquist. And for volleyball, junior high volleyball coach, Amanda Cisco. Are there any questions on any of that? Okay, if there are no questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thanks, Kyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Angie. Any, any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Moving on to policy review. We have the second reading of the following policies. Policy 412, 413, 414, 415, 416, 417, 418, and 419. Any updates on any of that? Any changes?
Just the updates that we'd like to bring is that in 416, the only addition that the state is recommending, their school board association, is to add cannabis in, because of it being legalized, the word cannabis is in. So, drug, alcohol, and cannabis testing. So, that's just an added-in word to the policy, and we recommend that we go with that red line add-in. And then on 418, there was quite a bit of red line. By that, I mean like things that the state has put in that they want to change. There was quite a bit, but it was all related to cannabis products in the school. And I had a really good conversation with our school nurse, who is very up to date on this, and said it is mandated by the state of Minnesota. We cannot have these products in our school building. So, it's really not up for the discussion. It's a mandate. So, I think we should go ahead. My recommendation, I think our, our recommendation would be that we would incorporate all the red line changes to update that. So, with that being done, then I think that'd be good.
Okay. Any other questions about any of those policies? If not, is there a motion to approve the second reading of those policy numbers that I skipped?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, thanks. Deb, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Amanda. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Now, first reading of the policies 420, 421, 422, 423, 424, and 425. Anything we should know, Deb, on the?
Nope. These are all, they've all been updated, and they're all good.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about any of those policies? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the first reading on those mentioned policies?
So move.
Thanks, Angie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kyle. Any discussion questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Okay, I guess we have to approve the 2024 graduating class.
Hence the meeting tonight.
Could we postpone this?
One more day. postpone it one more day. Somehow I feel like they're ready to graduate.
Alright, can I get a motion approving of the 2024 class?
I so move. I approve.
Alright, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright.
Give it to Kyle.
Okay, Kyle, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you can't be opposed. So, motion carried. Alright, so we need a, approve a resolution for a membership in the State High School League, which is just a formality that's done every year. Would someone like to make the motion to adopt that resolution? Thanks, Angie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Amanda. Does this have to be a roll call though? Do you know, Jen?
It does not.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Okay, now we're going to have some discussion and consideration of our long-term substitute pay. And I think Deb wanted to bring that up, right?
Is that okay? Do you want to say anything, or should I start?
I love what you're going to say, so go for it.
Okay. So, I, okay, I did some research. After we had met this time, I felt like I had, that we did not have all the information maybe we needed at the time.
Because we had discussion about it, right?
We had a light discussion about it in March. Right. But, but I, I believed that, and found to be true, that the substitute teacher pay was, was not adequate for long-term. So, what we had here, we have the substitute staff pay for the non-certified, and we kind of got that cleared up. And then the external agreement for a daily substitute teacher, we went with 125 per day. And I checked with Southland, Grand Meadow, Kingsland, Fillmore Central, so the schools that are, you know, in our area. And there, they were either at 120 or 130, and we had set it at 125. So, I think we're okay in that category. But where we fall down is?
Because we need to be competitive.
Right, right. So, I mean, if you guys wanted to go to 130, a number of the other schools that I told you are at 130. So, we can think about that as well. And then when we get to long-term substitute pay, all the schools, Southland, Grand Meadow, Kingsland, and Fillmore Central, when you get to long-term, and I'll talk about what that means in a minute, but it's, it's on the teacher pay scale of BA1. So, your teacher's BA first year. Not like tier one, but a teacher with a license, first year. And then they take that salary and they divide it out to make an hourly wage, which comes out to be about $220 an hour versus what we had listed here as one thing.
A day.
I mean, a day. An hour. That was a grade. That's a, so that comes out to be close to $220 a day versus what we are saying 150 a day. So, I, I feel to be competitive and to be respectful that we should, as for a long-term substitute, that we should do that based on our contract of BA1. And then their choice, the, most of the schools are either, long-term substitute is for teaching in the same class. So, 10 days or 15 days. Some schools go by 10 days, and then on the 11th day, that you are teaching for the same teacher in the same class. Okay, so the 11th day or the 16th day, then you start getting the higher rate of pay.
So, up until that time, we'd be at 125.
Correct. So, to help Deb out here too, in terms of that, the 10 or 15 day, now there can be local control of the 10 day, but statute-wise, you know, what's in Minnesota statute, it's that 15th day. And as she's saying, it's consecutive. They cannot be relieved of duty, then it starts all over again. To be a long-term substitute, so typically this is done for maternity leave. That's what we like to use as an example, because they're typically out 12 weeks. And we kind of know ahead of time. You guys usually approve them, so we have a general idea of when the baby's coming. So, then we contract them. We cannot pay them those first 15 days as the long-term. But at that 15 and beyond, we would pay them, as she's suggesting as an example, BA1, if you guys want to go down there that way. But it has to be, if they would miss a day, and let's say we need them as an emergency in another room, then that is over. We start all over with consecutive. So, it's, it's crazy. Not, not that I don't really think anybody would come down and, from MDE or the state or anything like that, but just ethically speaking, you know, we'd have to be careful.
Right.
You have to be a licensed teacher to be a long-term substitute?
Yes, you have to be tiered, identified as a tiered teacher to be, get the long-term.
Right now, we're at 150.
Currently, yep. Per year approval in?
After 15 days.
April? Yep.
After 15?
After 15.
After 6 days.
We, we did 15.
We did 6.
We did 6?
It says 6 in here.
I think it's, yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, I think you're right.
That's what it says on here. I don't know why that was decided, but, I mean.
We can't do 6 days. Oh, my God. That would be.
I like 14, like, can't we just go with statute and do 14, 15th day and make it clean? So, that's the same? I mean, I don't care, but.
So, would it be 120, it would be 125 for the first?
14.
14, 125.
I think it's, I think it's, you can look it up in statute. I think it's the 16th day. Like, I think it's.
15 days.
15 days.
Because, you know, that's three full weeks. And then I think on the 16th day, you start paying...
That makes sense.
Then you start paying the long-term.
Once you hit 15.
Yeah. And I know that statute, I would like us to just think for a few minutes if we want to look at the 10, on the 11th day, start paying it, because if you are doing a long-term sub, by the 14th day, I mean, by the end of the second week, you are doing all the work. There isn't lesson plans left, there isn't, you're doing the grading, you're doing the every, you're doing everything. You know, like, the first week, you know, maybe the teacher has left you things, and, but by the third week, you're really the full-time teacher. So I'm, I'm flexible on that, but I do think we should just consider it.
And if you're thinking budget, don't worry too much about that. It's, it's a rarity in your district.
Right.
That we have long-term.
I'm not going to break this.
Right, it will not, it will not.
Yeah, and, and...
That would mean we have a bunch of young new teachers.
That'd be kind of nice.
Should be good.
It'd be a good problem.
Other things can happen too, like an accident or an illness or whatever. But I just think that it's something we should think about.
So right, I get, so right now, we're at 125, but if you're long-term, you move up to 150?
Yeah.
Is that what it is? Okay.
But we approve that based on just...
We had to...
We had to get something.
We have to get something on books.
And then upon looking at that, I realized that that was not adequate, and I feel like we should...
I don't know about anybody else, but I'm okay with the 11th day going with BA Step 1.
Yeah.
I think so too, and that makes us more competitive, doesn't it?
It does. And I also want to remind you, I will make sure this is brought to your attention every spring anyway. So please, please know that if you tend to forget about it, like I do, you'll get it like every April, you know, whatever it may be.
What it's scheduled for the next year.
Yeah, if you'd like to change it or like it, we'll just approve it.
And if you were wondering why we hadn't really talked about it much before, it's because we had been on Teachers on Call for quite a few years, nine or 10 years, and Teachers on Call did all of that. And so that's why this is, that's why this is just coming to light again now, and so... Yeah.
Anybody else have any other thoughts? Otherwise, would someone like to throw out a motion out there? That we could approve, maybe?
So should we, should we just, should we leave the first part as it was, and then just start with the change being the external long-term?
Yep.
Should we do that?
Yep.
Okay, so I make a motion to change the external long-term substitute pay to be, on the 11th day, 11th consecutive day for the same teacher, go to BA1 pay scale. I also would like to say that we should go retroactive for the long-term sub we had this year, because this should have been in place prior to, to the teaching.
We may have to make that a separate.
Okay, I can do that. I can do, I certainly can do that. Let's, let's just make the motion for how it's going to be now.
Yeah. Keep it kind of clean just for our books, if that's all right.
That's a good, okay. Do you want me to say that again, or are you good?
I'll second that.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Second by Kyle. Okay, any other discussion on that? If not, is, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Now, to the question of making it retroactive.
Okay.
Anybody have any thoughts about that? Deb has, mentioned hers.
I, I would agree with Deb on, if this isn't something that we've, or just, I, I would agree that...
Yeah.
They would maybe deserve that.
For this year, because this is just, for this year, we're just getting it figured out.
Yeah, it's, it's a rare, a rare case.
So we're making a long-term subpay retroactive to beginning of the 2324 academic year?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion?
Just give it to Deb.
Deb?
Yeah, I make the motion that we make that retroactive.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Okay, Amanda. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Thank you, that feels very respectful.
Okay, approval of the resolution for the reauthorization of board-approved referendum authority. That's a lot of words for what?
Continue the referendum.
Yes, to basically, that's about right, Deb. Deb is actually right, you guys. So we have, within basically five years to, to do what we're doing tonight, we are at the third year. So we thought we'd come forward, we like to do things early around here, as you probably already know, when it comes with money. So what had happened was our financial advisors, Aylers, you've heard of them, they've actually presented to you guys before in the past, but they're kind of our go-tos whenever it comes to bonds, referendums, you know, what is our, really anything, you could go to them for anything, big picture, not payroll necessarily, but other bigger things that we have to deal with. Bonding, that's a big one. And so they came forward to me, actually, and said, hey, if you'd like to, this is kind of a nice sweet spot of time to go in front of your board, you guys have done this before, so it's nothing new, but it is a resolution, and it's lengthy. And so our clerk, our young clerk here, she will be taking notes as we go, but we do need motions and seconds, all in favor, who isn't, who isn't, who is not in favor of this, but to continue with what we're doing in terms financially.
Okay.
I had one question, and that was, are we, are we, is the current referendum that we have the one that is the same every year, or is it the one that changes with the cost of living? Let me see if I can find, I meant to highlight this.
I think it's the one that you get, because our levy will go up and down.
Okay, so it says...
But I believe this one does too. Same people, no, we're doing the same per pupil amount.
Okay.
This one is.
Okay.
That we've always had, the last, since 2016, I believe you guys have.
Okay. So it's the same?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's really, it really is just carrying on the same?
It's the levy, remember, we always do a big levy, well, Sharon does a big levy presentation.
Right.
That's the one usually where taxpayers are like, how much is it going up or down?
Right.
Or all that, but this is the maintaining of.
Okay.
Yep, it's, if you guys want to know what page it's on, if you look, it's on the second page, number two. And this does, I will be faxing this tonight to Aylers, and they do put it on the state website. I don't know what state website it is. I assume it's something financial, but maybe it's MDE, but it does get posted, so everybody can see it. And of course, it's in our meeting minutes too, so we post it locally too, but it will be statewide posted.
Any other questions? If not, would someone like to make the motion to adopt that resolution?
I'll make the motion to adopt that resolution.
Okay. Thanks, Amanda, is there a second? A second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thanks, Deb. Any other discussion or questions? I would assume this, this has to be a roll call, thank you.
Yes, please.
Deb?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Motion, motion carried.
And just so you're aware, when there are board members absent for something like this, we do have to make note of that in this document, so just so you're aware. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Plumbing estimates for the Highway 56 project and the Cardinal Kids Classroom Laboratory. I wasn't able to even open that for some reason, so I don't even...
Do you want to see my copy, Dave?
Sure.
Here's more copies if you guys want to look too.
Jen, do you have any kind of a recommendation, or I assume that you know more about these than we do?
Yeah. So again, I really leaned on Tim Bly again to help me out with this one, I don't know a whole lot about plumbing. And so we do go with first-class quite often, they are the lesser of the two options we have in front of you. We use them a lot when we have issues, and as you can see, it's a significant difference. Yeah. We've not used Valor before, but because they're relatively local, Stewartville, we thought we'd reach out. But it would be my recommendation to continue to stay within our guiding principles of being financially responsible, but I also know it's a good company that I would recommend too. We've never had issues with first-class. And so just so, if the public is watching this, this is for our Cardinal Kids Cardinal Care lavatory that we've wanted for quite a few years, long before I came here, but the timing is ripe right now because of our Highway 56 project and the plumbing that will happen, since that's all tore up anyway. So it's pretty exciting. It's a great question, so we have, it's, how do I say, it's kind of the wall by the bandroom.
That separates those two rooms?
Kind of right in there, yep, but it's close to the highway there, yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Great question.
In that office that was there, or?
Yes. Yeah, I guess it was the old office. Yeah.
Is there a window in there, big one?
Well, there won't be, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, well, there is, isn't there?
No, not on the, not on the Cardinal Kids, not on the Cardinal Kids side, there's no.
Okay.
But Nina's got one. It's just one big glass wall.
All right.
All right, any other questions about those two plumbing estimates? Otherwise, would someone like to make a motion approving the estimate from first-class plumbing and heating from Rochester? The lower-priced option.
I'll make a motion to have first-class do that.
Thank you, Kyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Angie, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Are there any board committee reports?
I just wanted to say that for community ed, that they're been very active, ECFE has been very active within community ed, and they've got a lot going on for the summer, T-ball, baseball, they've got camps of volleyball, basketball, football, bucket drumming, pickleball, dance camp, cheer camp. So there is, they're having stuff for the kids to do, they're keeping it at a really nice low rate, they got some money from the city to, because the city doesn't run a baseball program or anything in the summer, and so they give some money to this community ed to do that, and so then they were able to not charge for some of the things. And then the camps, of course, they have a small charge on them, but filling up really well, and lots for our kids to do.
Sounds good. Anybody else have anything?
Scholarship, met last night, but I was not there, or anything. Awards, that's all I know.
You'll find out tomorrow.
I'll find, I'll find out tomorrow too.
Good, good. Okay, anything else that anyone wants to, needs to bring up before we adjourn? Okay. Other than that, there's not much on the district calendar, graduation tomorrow night, and a board meeting on June 18th. So that sounds like it, so would there be a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, oh.
Thanks, Angie. Second?
Deb.
Thanks, Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.